Mike check.
Welcome to the September 16th Planning Commission meeting. All members are present. Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see. Per the city's meeting rules and procedures, public comments are generally limited to five minutes or less time if a large number of speakers is anticipated, or if approved by the chair, we'll be doing five minutes tonight. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission, and if relevant, the Commission may direct them to staff. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided at the back of the chambers. During this portion of the meeting, those in the council chambers are permitted to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. Please note that the Commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days. April?
Through the chair, we have one speaker card. Danny?
Oh, there it goes. That for the record. Well, I'm freestyling today because things that have happened, have happened. The firehouse is gonna be built. That is the way it's gonna be. I will say that I spoke to Assistant Chief McAllister, and I told him, dude, I hope I'm wrong. I really hope I'm wrong, because if I'm right, that means that people have been endangered, that it has been a danger to the public for trying to squeeze that big, but ugly brown fire station on Second Street. The plan to put the Conde Costa County, I know it's outside of your purview, on Brentwood Boulevard, I honestly think that's a good idea. I think it's a bad location, but I think it's a good idea. My only hesitancy is because Super Advisor urges as the one that's pushing it, which is a sad thing to say, that even projects I agree with, I have to take with them. Keep an eye on it. I wanna thank Dame Whisper Lane, and if you don't know who that is, you're not on Facebook. I wish, I, I, boy. I can honestly say, for those who are on Facebook and know what I'm talking about, it's not me. Whoever this person is, they're giving me a run for my money, and to be honest, I'm just up here now to show my envy. So. Lastly, about the Emporium. I know, and again, it depends, because there's the real world where we have more people in front of me than behind me, and then we have the world of Facebook. And I can't talk about the world of Facebook, because it's just ridiculous, but out there, there's a concerted effort to silence free speech. Some guy said something that was upsetting to a person, and it has to do with the death of someone earlier this week. For the record, I can't stand the guy. I can't stand his rhetoric, his beliefs. I don't think anyone should be killed for their rhetorics or their beliefs. And on that same vein, I don't think people should lose their jobs for voicing an opinion that is counter. What really bothers me, and I'm just saying it here again because I'm freestyling, is that there are screams of off with their heads and things like that, even here, when there are questionable proposals vis-à-vis the firehouse. And instead of some type of open debate, it becomes a zero-sum game. For me to win, you have to lose. And I don't think, well, for one thing, I don't think you guys think that way. You have robust debates, you decide, and then the council. Then the council. But I hope you continue with your processes. I agree with a lot, some I don't. But I do appreciate the effort that you five and staff do, and I just want that on the record. And if you're not on Facebook, I would join just to look up Dame Whisper Lane. Classic, classic, classic. Thank you.
At this time, Chair, we have no other speakers.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next item is the consent calendar. There's one set of minutes for the regular meeting of August 5th, 2025. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
I move. I move for the minutes.
Through the chair, real quick, Commissioner Roberts, can we move that mic closer to your mouse so we can register the volume? Thank you.
Yes, April. I move.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving into public hearings, we have two items tonight. The first is a conditional use permit, CUP 24-009 and design review, DR 24-014, for a new 3,520-square-foot commercial building, featuring two suites, one for a Chipotle restaurant and the other for a future unidentified tenant, patio area, drive-through, and associated site improvements on a 0.66-acre parcel located at 3121 Balfour Road, APN 012-020-015. Miguel?
Thank you, Commissioner, or Chairperson, and good evening to the Commission and the members of the public. Miguel, City of Brentwood Planning Division, here to present DR 24-014 and CUP 24-009, which proposes a shell building located at 3121 Balfour Road. The site location has a general plan designation of general commercial. It is within the Plan Development 5 Planning District, so PD zoning, and it's within SubArea B, which is a commercial subarea. The proposed commercial building is located within the shops at Fairview Commercial Center. The specific request is for a new 3,520-square-foot shell building, which will feature two suites. One has been identified to be a Chipotle restaurant, consisting of outdoor seating, and it will also have a drive-through component. The second suite hasn't been identified, or a tenant for the second suite hasn't been identified yet. Associated site improvements are gonna be trash enclosure, parking area, and lighting, most of which has already been constructed for the original approval for the shops at Fairview. Access to the site can be taken off Fairview Avenue or Balfour Road. Parking, the proposed project proposes 19 spaces on-site. However, the overall center needs 406 parking spaces, including Chipotle, and the project will be bringing in, or the total site, or the total parking within the site will be 421 parking spaces. The applicant's also proposing 6,837 square feet of landscaping. The drive-through component would require a conditional use permit. It is one lane. It's, the one lane is gonna be surrounded by a three-foot-high CMU wall, and directly in front of the pickup window will be a 10-foot-high screen wall, as you can see on the bottom image. The drive-through will function as a digital pickup-only, which means there's no speaker box or menu board. People will generally place their orders online through their mobile app, make payment, and then just show up at the pickup window to pick up their food. The architecture of the building would incorporate designed elements to match the existing architecture of the shops at Fairview, which will include towers, a tiled base, and projecting cornice. The, the architecture also proposes a flat roof, and the parapet would be above mechanical equipment, so it's impossible for the mechanical equipment to be seen from any vantage point. The architecture also features vertical and horizontal projections to break up its massing. As noted before, the drive-through component does require a conditional use permit per the PD 5 zoning, and actually, two of the draft conditions of approval would require that drive-through hours of operations be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. And also, down the line, if the applicant decides that they do want a speaker or menu board, they would have to get an amendment for this conditional use permit by the Planning Commission at a public hearing. Consistency and recommendations. So the project is consistent with the general plan, general commercial, and use designation. It's consistent with the PD 5 SubArea B zoning designation. A mitigative negative declaration, MND, was adopted back in February 1st of 2005 for the whole center. And the project also qualifies as a Class 32 categorical exemption for infill development. So staff would recommend that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 25-013 approving conditional use permit 24-009, and adopt Resolution Number 25-014 approving Design Review 24-014. And both of these would be subject to certain findings and conditions. That would conclude Staus' presentation. I'm here if there's any questions, and I believe the applicant's here as well for any questions.
Thank you, Miguel. Does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff? Gerald? Go ahead.
So was this was this submitted and completed before the new drive-through regulations that we passed a couple months ago?
Well, the city council hasn't formally adopted a new ordinance regulating drive-throughs, so, yes.
And second question, the hours, is that the, maybe, maybe I should wait for the applicant, but that hours is the hours, the seven, seven in the morning to 11:00 p.m.? That's the hours they're allowed to open, not necessarily the hours they're gonna be opening, if I'm correct?
That's the hours that the applicant requested per their project description.
And another question is, how far is that from the houses, like, there's a drive, how far is that?
The drive-through itself?
No, no, no. So they're kinda like at the corner, and the next, the closest thing is like a residential home. How far is it from that residential?
Let me, um.
Sorry.
Are you talking about this northern portion of the drive-through, or the western portion of the drive-through, or the pickup window?
On north, on Fairview, right north of that property, how far is that house, or those houses from?
It's about 50 feet.
50 feet? Okay. My questions.
The queuing capacity for the, for the drive-through, and apologies if I missed it on there, how many cars could be stacked in there? Is it nine?
It's nine, if, if you're counting from the window itself.
From the window itself?
Yeah, you wouldn't count after the window.
Thank you.
All right, I would point out that the, there really wouldn't be queuing all that much because of the, the way the digital pickup functions.
And that, that might be for the applicant, because I, with the digital, just, I'm curious just what that looks like, and forgive my naivety on that, because I don't ever do it, so. I was, I'm more interested in just that, what that process looks like. It sounds like it's not gonna create an issue from a capacity standpoint, but I'm just, could ask the applicant that. Thank you.
If I may, I'm looking at the towers on this, and I'm wondering this height. And so are there other structures? I know where this is, but I can't recall structures being at that height. Would this surpass the, the height structures that are in that strip mall?
So this, all the structures at the strip mall have at least two towers each, and this one's actually a little bit shorter than the prominent ones, like the main anchor buildings. It's a little bit smaller than those, so it wouldn't surpass the height of those.
Just, just looked. Okay, great. Thanks.
And and I have no questions as well. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant. We'll have 10 minutes, and the applicant does go first. Does the applicant wish to address the Commission?
Good evening, Commission. My name is Sukjeet Tony Singh, representing Mr. Himmatt Garewal, the owner developer for this project. We are really thankful to the city staff, and we worked diligently and addressed all the issues, comments, before, appearing before the Planning Commission today. And I am here with the applicant and the Chipotle team to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
And do we have any questions for the applicant? I guess, should I go through everybody, or if you, if you just wanna light, if you have a question, and I'll call.
I'm sorry. Sure, just a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
So why 7 to 11, just out of curiosity?
It's, can I bring the Chipotle representative here?
Absolutely.
Hello. My name is Kim De Guzman with Chipotle Mexican Grill. I'm a design manager.
Hi, I'm Amber Reed with Chipotle. Our typical hours are about 10:30 to 11:00 or midnight, and we like just to give visibility. We have a whole crew in that comes in very early in the, in the building, so it's easier and a little bit more like information-forward if we let everybody know, it's like, there's going to be a crew there probably at 5:00 a.m. We use earlier hours than our opening hours in applications.
So are you saying that, even though it's saying 7 to 11, you're not, you're in, I just wanna make sure I'm clear. You're not intending to be open, it's, like, Chipotle doesn't serve necessarily breakfast food, so I'm just trying to figure out, is it the intention to be open at 7:00 in the morning, or is the intention to be open a little later?
Our standard opening time is about 10:30, and you're correct, we don't offer breakfast at this time.
And then the other question, while I got you there, is, forgive me, I couldn't, I went through this thing several times, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out, is there gonna be a sit-down restaurant inside or no?
There is.
There is. Okay. Those are my questions.
Fisher and Jones?
Yeah, thank you. Can you, can you just walk me through the digital pickup, and like, is there anything that would potentially create an issue where cars could get stacked?
There shouldn't be. So you order on your app, and in our app, you choose the time of your pickup. And I've had this happen to me. You get there before your pickup, and they ask you to go around, or pull forward. There should be, you know, ample parking for people to pull forward, and then either our crew can bring it out, or the customer goes inside. So there isn't a time that you're sitting waiting, you've already ordered before you've ever entered the, we call it a Chipotle, before you've ever entered the Chipotle, your order is being prepped. And so typically, you just should pull forward, give your name, and a bag comes out. That's it. You've paid. That's the extent of the interaction.
Gotcha.
It moves really quick.
Okay, yeah, and I, and the part of reason I bring that up too is because, to your point, Commissioner Johnson, there's a little bit, I mean, we're, we're away from homes, but we're not completely away from homes. And so I, I think a little bit about the, just, is there a stacking potential? And could that create traffic in the, in that, in that area? But it sounds like your process is pretty straightforward, and you don't really see a lot of, a lot of problems as a result.
That's correct. We've done studies in suburban areas where at max peak during lunch, our maximum stack would be around four to five cars for being the most common.
Gotcha.
And operationally speaking, the restaurant has to make the food about 10 to 15 minutes prior to the actual desired date, uh, sorry, the time that the, that the person orders, so.
Good, thank you. And again, another reason too is there's been some, a little bit of public comment that's come via written, you know, that had some concerns about the drive-through. And so I just think it's good to kind of help the residents, particularly if they're listening in this, in that area, understand what the process is, so, thank you.
Chair Meredith Roberts, do you have any?
No, I know that we have a Chipotle on my end of Brentwood, and it, it is smoothly, it moves quite nicely. Your, your system is kind of flawless. I mean, it's a standard that has been implemented and apparently works very well, especially in quiet neighborhoods. So for that, I can, I can attest. What I've seen is no bombardment with noise and stacking. I have not seen that in any of the Chipotles, not just here, but in, in other states. It's just a standard that you guys have in place. So for the public, this is not your typical drive-through or, what's the term, Eric?
I'm sorry. The term for what?
It's not, it's not your typical drive-through. It is, it is
Unconventional?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a different style of pickup service, food pickup service. And so to that end, very different. And I'm hoping that the public knows there's a differentiation between the Jack in the Boxes and the Burger Kings to that of Chipotle. That's all, I just had a comment.
Vice Chair Brandon?
Only questions I really had were mostly around circulation in the lot. There's great plans for the fire travel as well as the garbage travel. But, you know, because the entry is on the north side, on the north end of the building, and then the exit's on the south side, I just, I was kind of, it was unclear to me at least where, what the intended flow of the vehicular traffic is to and then from the restaurant. I don't know if there were any additional details there.
Do you mean specifically into the Chipotle lane or just parking in front of the building?
It's primarily focused on the, on the drive-through. So what I envisioned at least is you had two options. One is the right turn into, from Fairview, and the other one is you make a left on, from Balfour and go up north past the CVS and around. I'm, I mean, I could save some of my other comments for later, but I just, I was curious, because normally we'll get some sort of rough plan that indicates what the circulation looks like. We, I imagine we probably wouldn't want to add, you know, significant stress on existing tenants that operate within the Fairview Shopping Center. So just getting a clearer picture of what that might look like would be helpful for me at least.
So we were, and I don't have an exhibit or anything to show you that shows this traffic flow, but the landscaping curb area on the north side, for us, we thought that it was really nicely kind of pushed back a little bit for that right-hand kind of, almost a U-turn to the right entrance. And it's, it's rounded, and that curb is broad enough, it's not super narrow. So we were anticipating quite a bit, even from the light at Balfour and Fairview, you know, either coming in at the curb cut to the south of the building or for our, our operations also at the north end of the building. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but...
I, I think so. I
Okay.
I haven't, I didn't measure that out on GIS, but it, I mean, it looks very tight if we were going to do some kind of U-turn there. I'd say, what, typical lanes, what, 12 feet wide, something like that? So give or take, add four or five feet to it. You got to have a car turning radius of under, what, outside wheel, and, well, this is getting a bit technical, but if that, if I'm hearing you correctly, that would be the primary means of entering or?
I actually think the one to the south is more primary.
So through the lot north and then left into the... The only reason I say that is this location, and I'm not a, you know, economic advisor or anything, but it serves south Brentwood for the most part, because we have the northwestern location, and then we have the, the east location that Commissioner Roberts described. Right, so if this is serving the south, southern population, most people, at least that I can see is, they're going to drive up Fairview and then probably turn right into that, so presumably on the second right. And if they come from east or southeast, they're going to take Balfour in, turn right on Balfour, and go up and over to, in that way. So presumably that either one of those right turn exits, entries, if, if I'm trying to take the path of least resistance, what a former traffic director, Curse Van, would say is like, traffic flows like water, is that right? He would always say that, and so we want to take the path of least resistance, as far as I can tell. So I don't, I don't know if there's been any studies on how quickly you could do a U-turn there, but I, I would certainly be curious.
When we were reviewing this, and especially when we were on tour early in the planning stages, the thought was it would be more, more commonly, you, the southern ingress egress point to the parking lot would be more commonly used. And then that northern point is either traffic, you know, just not related to us possibly egressing, but also for a, for a car that has just, for whatever reason, not turned in, and then the, that's just the secondary opportunity, right? That was the conversation we all had when we were out touring quite a bit ago.
I see, okay. That puts it a bit more perspective. I just, I, just some circulation questions, because I, it's, it's not ideal if most, you know, customers would have to drive through the whole, the whole lot just to get to this restaurant. But yeah, that was the main thing. And then I don't know if there were, the second follow-up feedback on that is, I don't know if you would have some type of sign that indicates the most optimal right turn into that? So if both right turns are available, I don't know if a motorist would necessarily imply, unless they visited the restaurant on several occasions, what would be the most ideal way, the, the least painful way to enter that shopping center? So I've seen some other establishments do that, where it says to enter a drive-through, enter here versus, you know, the next location. I don't, I don't know if that was something that was part of this application as well.
I don't want to speak for Tony. I, we have signage for the entrance to the Chipotle lane itself, but not separate signage for Chipotle, turn here as part of, I, Tony, I don't want to speak for you.
Yeah, basically signage is out of the scope of this application. So sign permits will follow the building, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Well, following up on that, I have a little bit of perspective on that for Vice Chair Brandon and for everybody. I, I happen to live in that neighborhood, and I, I live in Deer Ridge. And just coming over here tonight, I decided to take a swing by the, the plot there, just sort of a quickie site visit. And what I can tell you is the direction I'm coming from, I turn left onto Fairview, and I have a choice of those two rights, but I never knew that second right that's past the plot even existed because every time I go to visit that shopping center, I take the first one. And the reason why is because there's a, a turn lane in front of it. So like, you, you come around the corner, you get into that turn lane, and you take that first right. And then, you know, it was like when I looked at the plan, I go, oh, huh, there's a road back there. So I, and then I turned left past, past the plot, and then I turned left and I came back out. So I, I think most people will be coming in between the two right-hand turns off of Fairview. I think they're going to be taking the, the, the more southern one because there's a turn lane, and it just guides them in there. And I, I did think that that might make them kind of have to do kind of a loop-de-loop in front of people that are trying to get out. I, I don't see it as a huge problem because of the, the kind of lower volume, and there's, there's nothing else back there right now. So I, I think it'll be all right. And I think over time, if you have repeat business, the customers will go out that way, and then they'll realize, hey, I could have come in this way, and if it's more convenient for them, they'll do it. But yeah, just at the beginning, I think, like me and anybody else that lives over there, they'll take the southern one. Does that, does that answer your question pretty well?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's clear, thank you.
All right. And I have no other questions, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, commission.
At this time, we have no speakers here in the chamber that would like to speak, and we have no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, April. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So I'll, I'll go ahead and go in order. Because for any discussion, let's, let's start with Commissioner Johnson, you want to go first?
I don't have any more questions at this time.
Or discussion?
I don't, I'm I, I don't, for right now, from based on what I can see, my only concern was the distance from the, you know, the homes. I also had some concern about lighting and the time that they were opening. But having heard the applicant say they're not opening at seven o'clock in the morning, and it's only 50 feet away from the house over there, I didn't want to stick somebody with a whole bunch of noisy stuff at seven in the morning. So I, I feel comfortable with, with what's going on at that drive-through, with the digital drive-through. The lighting was there before, so we're probably not going to have any light bleed into the house too. So if it wasn't, if it wasn't bleeding before, it's not going to bleed now. Maybe that wasn't the right terminology to use in terms of, but you guys knew what I meant, okay? I have, I don't, I don't have any problems right now, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think the project's pretty well within the scope of, you know, the commercial center and just the build-out. You know, that design, I think, is consistent with just the surrounding architecture. Thank you for clarification on just the digital component. I think that definitely provides a lower-impact approach, particularly for the homes in the area. So I think we're good there. Other than that, you know, I, is in terms of just the unknown future tenant, and maybe we can get some clarification on this, but what, what is, what typically would be zoned for that building? Just so I'm clear.
Just bring up the zoning real quick.
It's in PD-5, if I remember correctly. Similar to general commercial, right, yeah?
Yeah, so retail, bakeries, pastry shops, coffee shops, bookstores, candy stores, florists, drugstores, to restaurants, barber beauty shops, professional offices, and financial institutions, including banks and general retail. So typical stuff that you would find in a commercial center like this.
Excellent, okay, thank you. And bringing that up again, just thinking about traffic, so I, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
And Chair Meredith Roberts?
Oh, yeah, I, I don't have any questions, or I, I don't have any concerns either. I think that it is well-constructed. They've got a pretty good reputation on operating in the suburbs. And so it's in addition to that corridor across the street there from Safeway and CVS. I'm sure that they have done their studies, and I'm pretty sure that they'll be a gain and a nice addition to that community. I don't have any questions, thank you.
Yeah, Vice Chair Brandon?
Yeah, I mean, I really had only expressed my concerns regarding circulation. It sounds like for the most part, they should handle it. I mean, I, I'm not wild about the U-turn on the second Fairview entrance, because it's pretty tight. I just put it in GIS, and it was about 21 feet in terms of that. But evidently, a, you know, current-generation suburban can do that, so I'll take it. Common vehicle in Brentwood, in case everyone, anyone's curious. So, yeah, I think that'll work well. The, I'm really happy to see the substantial amount of vegetation and landscaping. It's a really nice addition to that corner. Unfortunately, many of these lots have been vacant for a very long period of time, all surrounding that Dollar Tree. And so it'll be nice to drive past there and see some kind of, you know, flora that's unique to the area. I, you know, I, my primary experience with these, what a progressive drive-through, I don't know, we don't actually order at the drive-through, have been very positive. They run very efficiently, especially the one on Sand Creek and Brentwood Boulevard. And so I'm, I'm not terribly concerned about the throughput. I think, I think their assessment of the four to five cars at max is probably even generous, based off of what I've seen at least anecdotally. You know, other than that, yeah, the, as far as design goes, I like the integration of the Chipotle corporate colors with the, you know, the similarities to this complex as a whole. I know there's, many of these buildings have been around a long time, so it's just a nice, it should make a nice addition. And yeah, the, I, I know we had received some comments regarding the this noise and stuff that may impact the area. I know this has sort of been said, I just, you know, the window does face the street. There is no amplification from some type of speaker, so presumably a car-driving vial will probably be, you know, significantly louder than a, you know, person speaking at the, at the window going to pick up. So I, I don't suppose that that should have a marketable impact on the neighborhood from my assessment. But other than that, yeah, I think it looks like a great project, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brandon. First of all, I just want to say I, I really love the concept of the digital drive-through. I think Chair Meredith Roberts kind of came up, we're going to have to have a, a new word for a non-digital drive-through. Maybe we'll just call it non-digital. It's a, it's a back formation, like back when, when they started selling wireless phones back in the 80s, all of a sudden, then you had a corded phone, which used to just be a phone. So this gets rid of the things about drive-throughs that I hate the most, which is the Squawk Box. The giant lighted menus aren't going to be there. And because that you're having the customer put in a time for pickup, you're not going to have the, the traffic issues. And I tend to believe you on the studies that you've done, and it just makes sense. So we'll see, I live near there, so I'll see personally. But I, I think this is just an excellent idea. And I, I'll tell you, when I, when I drove by there, the one thing I did notice is that right next to that pad, just across the north street, is, is a house, and it's just like right there. And something that I care a lot about, and you'll, you'll hear me speak about in these meetings, is how a business will affect the neighbors. And I did notice that house does have a sound wall, which comes almost up to the top of the first-floor windows. He's just, there's just two first-floor windows there, and there's no second-story windows. So I'm, I'm hoping that it'll be nice and quiet. I didn't notice anything about time of day for deliveries and for, you know, carrying trash out and dumping it into the, the trash cans. Didn't really ask, but my, my faith is that we'll be good neighbors here, and Didn't really ask, but my, my faith is that we'll be good neighbors here and we won't be getting complaints. So with that said. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt resolution number two-five dash zero-one-three approving conditional use permit number two-four dash zero-zero-nine, subject to certain findings and conditions.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Oh, oh, I gotta read the design review. Forgive me.
And I can do that chair for. I also make a motion to adopt resolution number two-five dash zero-one-four approving design review number two-five dash zero-one-four, subject to certain findings and conditions.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Now, congratulations. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item E two. Text amendments to the Brentwood municipal code related to the adoption of objective design standards for residential and mixed-use development needed to comply with state law as required by the city's adopted housing element implementation policies. We have Jennifer.
Thank you, Chair and members of the Commission. Tonight, in collaboration with JZMK Partners, we're here to present the text amendment to the municipal code related to the adoption of our objective design standards for residential and mixed-use development, which we call our ODS. Drafting the ODS has been a long and thorough process, which started by taking in the initial 2006 residential design guidelines and carrying over applicable guidelines to be transferred into these new guidelines and standards. With the help of JZMK, staff believes that we've come up with a comprehensive document that will continue to reflect the values and character of the community in a meaningful and thoughtful way. Tonight's presentation will be given to you by Tim Hagan from JZMK, who is joining us tonight via Zoom. He will go through his presentation and summary of the document. And the conclusion will be available for questions and to go through any chapters or areas that the Commission would like to discuss further. As I'm sure you've all seen, this is a lengthy and often wordy document. Staff and our consultant team are here to assist you in any way possible tonight, so we can make sure that your comments and concerns may be clearly conveyed to council. And with that, I will hand the presentation over to Tim.
All right. Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Let me share my screen. And can everybody see my screen? It should read City of Brentwood Objective Design Standards?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Again, my name is Tim Hagan, no relation to Jennifer. I'm a senior planner and an associate at JZMK Partners. I'd like to wish you good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm here to share an overview of Brentwood's objective design standards, what they are, why they matter, and how they will help guide future development in a clear, consistent way. Tonight, I'll walk you through the draft standards and highlight key elements that are essential to give you a solid understanding of the draft standards and outline the next steps towards adoption. So tonight's presentation is meant to provide a general overview of the current draft of Brentwood's objective design standards. I'll walk you through their purpose and goals, give you a snapshot of their content and where we are in the process, so you know what to expect as we move forward towards adoption. Objective design standards are Brentwood's response to recent state housing legislation, which requires that qualifying housing projects be reviewed and approved through objective criteria. These standards will help streamline the review process, reduce uncertainty for applicants, and support the city's efforts to deliver new housing in a timely and predictable manner. Now, before we get into the details of the standards, it's helpful to understand what we mean by objective. The shift from subjective to objective design standards is at the heart of recent state legislation, and it changes how cities review projects. Objective standards are clear, measurable rules that can be applied without personal interpretation, like specific height limit or required setback. Subjective standards rely on personal judgment using terms like visually pleasing or compatible, which can vary from reviewer to reviewer. California law now requires objective standards in many housing approvals to ensure fairness, transparency, and predictability for all applicants. The standards are designed to accomplish several key goals. First, to provide clear citywide regulations that everyone can understand, the public, staff, and the development community. They aim to preserve Brentwood's character, promote high-quality, human-scale design, and create a cohesive pedestrian-friendly environment. And when taken together, these goals will help ensure new projects complement the community's existing fabric while raising the bar for design excellence. How did we get here? To provide some context, here's how we arrived at the draft before you tonight. In May of 2023, the city council approved a professional services agreement to prepare and complete both the focus zoning code, zoning ordinance update and the objective design standards. In December of 2023, the city council held a study session with our consultant team, where we introduced the ODS and received direction on their content, organization, and overall look and feel of the document. Throughout 2024 and into 2025, the consultant team of De novo and JZMK worked closely with city staff to craft the draft document incorporating results from public outreach efforts. In April of 2025, a public review draft was prepared and shared with the community via the city's website and social media channels. But to date, little to no public comment has been received. And finally, in May of 2025, the draft was presented to the Land Use and Development Committee on May 19th, bringing us to tonight's presentation. And before we get into the actual document context, let me give you just a brief introduction to why this consultant team is here and what we bring to the table. JZMK Partners has prepared multiple objective design standards documents across California, several of which have already been successfully adopted. Our team understands how to translate urban design principles and architectural standards into clear, objective criteria that can be consistently applied by staff and easily followed by developers. We work collaboratively with cities to ensure the final document aligns with the community's goals and provides a practical, enforceable tool for reviewing future projects. Our combined experience and expertise allow us to deliver a product that will serve Brentwood for years to come. Now, let's get to the document, its layout and contents. The standards are organized into six chapters: introduction, site planning, site design, building design, architectural styles, and landscape. This organization allows us to look at projects from the big picture down to finer details, ensuring a consistent approach to planning, design, and construction across the city. Let's begin with the introduction chapter, which sets the stage for the entire document. It explains the purpose of the objective design standards, outlines how the document is organized, and clarifies which project types must comply. It also describes how the standards relate to the city's general plan and zoning code, ensuring consistency between the two documents. Finally, it gives us a user guide so that residents, staff, and applicants know how to navigate and apply the standards to their projects. In chapter two, we talk about site planning, the chapter that sets the framework for how the land is organized. This section focuses on block sizes, pedestrian connectivity, and mid-block connections to encourage walkable, connected neighborhoods. The key purpose of these mid-block connections is to break down large building masses, creating more human-scale development that feels consistent with Brentwood's existing low-density character. It also establishes open space requirements, both private and public, so that every project contributes to the city's networks of parks and gathering spaces. Together, these standards ensure that new development is appropriately scaled, well-connected, and designed to enhance the existing fabric of the community. From there, we move in a little closer to look at site design, which addresses how individual sites function. This chapter covers shared and private open space, vehicular access, parking layouts, and pedestrian and bicycle circulation. The intent here is to create sites that are safe, comfortable, and inviting for people with clear pathways, ADA accessibility, and thoughtful sight lighting that balances safety with neighborhood compatibility. Chapter four is about building design. Once the site is planned, the next chapter focuses on the buildings themselves. Building design sets the standards for massing, modulation, roof forms, and articulation, so the buildings feel appropriately scaled and architecturally engaging. It includes requirements for window placement, street-facing transparency, and building entries to encourage pedestrian engagement. It also covers practical details like screening utilities, noise attenuation, and managing service areas, helping to create buildings that are well-composed, architecturally attractive, and functionally efficient. Chapter five focuses on architectural styles, which are a key part of Brentwood's identity. This chapter defines the styles that are appropriate for new development and sets clear criteria for each. The goal is to ensure that materials, roof forms, and detailing are authentic and that new projects create a cohesive, well-designed look that enhances Brentwood's character. To prepare this section, we conducted an architectural study of Brentwood's existing residential neighborhoods. And then based on that study, we identified the styles that are most appropriate for residential development moving forward. After analyzing Brentwood's existing architectural styles, we created a new map that best reflects the architectural vision for the city of Brentwood. The map divides the city into three architectural style zones shown in blue, green, and red, each with a set of allowed styles. In the northwest, northeast corner, PA one, shown in blue, allows only contemporary style, playing off the already-defined modern look of that area. The downtown core, shown at the center in green, allows Spanish, craftsman, Queen Anne, colonial, and Italianate styles. This mix reflects the area's historic and eclectic character and will help establish an identifiable vernacular that feels distinct from the rest of the city. The remaining areas of the city, shown in red, allow Spanish, Mediterranean, craftsman, contemporary, ranch, and colonial styles, offering a balance of consistency and design choices across Brentwood. This slide displays an example of each style identified throughout the study. It provides a quick look at the full range of styles included in the standards before we move into a more detailed example on the following slides. And now, within the document, each style is laid out with the same structure organized into five subcategories. They are architectural features, roofs, walls and windows, materials and colors, and decorative accents and details. Now, these next few slides use the Spanish style as an example to show you how each style is presented in the document. You can see how we start with a written style description, followed by detailed requirements for each of the five subcategories. And I'll show you that here in a minute. This approach ensures clarity and consistency for designers and builders, helping them understand what is required to achieve authentic, high-quality architecture. The first spread shown here focuses on, or I'm sorry, it begins with architectural features, as shown in the bottom left, illustrated with an example photo and supported by additional images. Shown on the right, how that style can be expressed across different densities allowed by the zoning code. The next spread focuses on roofs, walls, and windows. Each category includes required elements that must be incorporated in order to achieve that style, along with optional elements that provide additional ways to reinforce its character. Some have these optional elements, but not all. The final two sections cover materials and colors, which establish the overall look of the style, and decorative accents and details, which add definition and authenticity. For the remaining styles, Mediterranean, ranch, craftsman, queen anne, Italianate, colonial, and contemporary, the full document contains the same detailed standards as shown in this Spanish-style example. I encourage you to review the actual draft document if you want to see the rest of those architectural styles. The final chapter of the document highlights the importance of landscape as a core part of good design. Its standards guide the selection of plant materials, the design of outdoor spaces, and the treatment of edges and buffers, so that new development feels connected to its natural setting. The chapter also supports sustainability goals by encouraging shade, stormwater management, and climate-appropriate solutions that enhance the comfort and character of Brentwood's neighborhoods. Now that we've covered the content of the document, let's take a look at next steps in the process. First, following this evening's discussion, we'll respond to planning commission comments and make any recommended revisions. And then the next step is to receive your recommendation for approval, so that the draft standards can be forwarded to city council for adoption. Your feedback tonight will help ensure the standards reflect the community's goals before they're finalized. And that concludes our basic overview of the objective design standards. We appreciate your time and thoughtful consideration this evening, and we look forward to hearing your comments in incorporating as we move the document towards adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to clarifying questions, I just want to make a note for the Commission that the, the comments and things, we'll be doing a discussion. The section we're doing here is just clarifying questions. So with that, does anybody have any clarifying questions? And I'll just call people out. Commissioner Johnson?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions. Thank you.
And Chair Emeritus Roberts?
None at this time. You, you say that you're going to move from there to discussion?
We, we will in the normal course of business. And Vice Chair?
My only question is related to, I know you had a great slide on objectivity versus subjectivity. The, our, this document is classifying architectural style as a objective requirement. Is that right?
Correct. The, the standards that we've defined for each architectural style should ensure that each one of those styles is appropriately met.
So there's, there's objective standards to define each architectural style uniquely from one another?
Correct.
Okay, just, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a clarifying question. As, as you were given the assignment to do this, ODS, and it's very necessary that we do this, by the way, it's, I think everybody here understands the importance of this. I guess the question I have is, as you, as you were going through the existing design standards, residential design standards, were you given a direction to do as much as you could to preserve what those design standards contained, but just in a more objective way? Or how much of this, it seemed like some of it was trying to match by picking architectural styles, but some of it seemed to be conceptually just some new good ideas that were thrown in there. And I was, I was just wondering, I know that the people that live in Brentwood bought here, they looked at the community, they liked it. I'm somebody who looked at this community and liked it and bought it and appreciated everything that, that was done. And I'm just wondering how much of your assignment was to preserve what Brentwood is doing, but just do it in a way that's more compliant with the state versus how much of it was kind of reimagining what Brentwood could or should look like?
Is that best answered by myself or possibly Jennifer?
Either one.
I can go ahead if you'd like. Yeah, so our original intent was to try to preserve their residential design guidelines as much as possible. We wanted to ensure that new residential communities and neighborhoods were compatible and consistent. were compatible and consistent to older neighborhoods. And we wanted to make sure that as you're driving down the road, you're not able to tell the difference between a residential neighborhood that is done now versus residential neighborhood that was done 10 years ago. So yes, we did definitely take into consideration the residential design guidelines. We moved over for the majority of it. It was more the site planning and site design. Some of the single-family, or most of the single-family aspects, we took over in terms of single-family at the corners and, or single-story at the corners, making sure that there was a variety of two-story and one-story homes in single-family neighborhoods. A lot of that was carried directly over. That was objective. And we did want to make sure that this was not a re-imagining and re-envisioning the future of Brentwood, that we did want to make sure that this included the previous community goals and the previous community vision and make that moving forward consistent.
All right, thank you. But that was my question. Thank you. At this time, the public is permitted to address the planning commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person except for the applicant. I don't think we have an applicant tonight. The city, which will be the city, of course, who will have 10 minutes. And does the applicant wish to address the commission this time? No? Okay. We'll go on to public speakers, who will have five minutes. April?
Yes, thank you, Chair. There is no one here in person, so we have no one here to speak in person. We'll go ahead and go to Zoom if anyone would like to speak. It looks like most of these are the consultants people. We have no speakers in Zoom.
All right, thank you, April. And it's a little disappointing because this is something that's going to have a tremendous impact on the shape of the city going forward. Nonetheless. And.
We'll just need a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion to close public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Time for discussion. Should we just continue going person to person?
Through the chair, real quick. Sorry. The, I know it got brought up at LUD, and I know you're on LUD, so I was hoping you could give us maybe a little bit of context as far as that. I don't recall watching that meeting. Maybe you can kind of help us understand what all y'all discussed so that we kind of have that context at least.
Well, famously, it's a long time from May to September. But what we discussed at LUD the first time around, and Vice Chair Brand is correct, I sit in an advisory role on Land Use and Development Committee LUD. We were given the current design review, the current, well, they're not current anymore. We're using the interim objective design standards now. But we were given the current design standards at the time, the 2006 design standards, so that we could look at them and start thinking about if there were changes that were needed and to discuss them. And staff was going to come back to us with the document that you see in front of you tonight, the new proposed objective design standards. Through a series of unfortunate events, LUD was canceled three times in a row. You might remember me when I was giving my staff reports, I was constantly urging the public to tune into the LUD meeting to see this because it's important, and then the LUD meeting would get canceled. So eventually, the decision was meeting made to bypass the LUD altogether and come straight to the next step, which is the planning commission. So we're evaluating it with no input from LUD at all. So, which is fine. So we're just going at it from scratch, as it were. And so Commissioner Johnson, do you want to start with the discussion?
You know, I looked through this. I just have, this is probably a Ms. Hagan-type question, but in the future, I know we did this part, I apologize, but it just came to me. In the future, somebody was going to build a housing development. Is it my understanding that the staff would review this document and you would say, okay, the Italianate, everything in this housing development meets the ODS standards? So that, not necessarily the planning commission would be, but that's how it would work?
Yeah, so in the future, as part of this, we will put together a checklist that will be part of our design review application. And applicants will be required to go through the checklist. The checklist is going to be an abbreviated version of this, basically just having the titles of each of these sections. And it would most likely have the title, and the applicant would be required to say, have you met this? Do you certify that you've met this? They're going to say yes, and, you know, and how they have met it. Then staff, we would go through and obviously double-check their work. In addition, single-family and residential developments in the future will also be going to an outside peer review to also double-check staff's work as well through this checklist. And so we would be going through the checklist. We would be going through this and confirming that they've met all of these. There is an option in here for an exception to an objective design standards. So what that does is, in certain types of approvals, that would take them out of a ministerial approval and make it a discretionary approval. So the planning commission or the city council would have a lot more leverage to approve or deny an exception if they were to do that, if they did not want to meet one of these for whatever reason. So that is basically kind of the workflow of how an application comes through. They would have the checklist. They would confirm whether they have met it. We would reaffirm it, and it would also go through an outside peer review.
Sorry, didn't ask earlier.
Before we go on, on that, so if the ministerial approval is granted, would the planning commission or city council see it at all?
There are, in most cases, yes. It depends on the type of state law, if they were trying to use a state law. In terms of, for example, an AB 2011, which was what we saw, that would bypass the planning commission. It would be something, though, that would go to the city council just to reaffirm. There's some similar to that that have newly just come out, that have not been applied for or not been used in the city that potentially would not go to planning commission or city council. But in the majority of the cases, they would.
Understood. Thank you. And continuing on, Commissioner Johnson, any more?
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you. Jennifer, Tim, I mean, nice presentation, and thank you for putting this in front of us. A little frustrating for me, you know, I don't like these state top-down laws that have been put in place that are bluntly stripping local communities like Brentwood the ability to, you know, plan the way they want to plan. But I do recognize that, you know, it's a state law, and that's just what it is. But one thing I would just put, going back into the the package, particularly looking at the contemporary design, I, I'm not a, I'm just personally not a fan of that design. I'm curious where that actually exists within Brentwood now, at least the pictures that I'm looking at. And I could be missing something, but I don't know if I've really seen anything like that in Brentwood, and I don't know if that would necessarily fit. So I think it's worth a discussion of just, you know, what that would look like. Outside of that, you know, I recognize again, you know, that this is just a part of the top-down approach here that, you know, this state's putting on us, which is unfortunate, but, you know, it is what it is. So, you know, I'm not a fan of this direction, but I know we're legally obligated in a lot of ways. So hopefully, we can discuss a little more on just some of the specifics of these designs. But particularly for the contemporary, I'm not a fan, and I don't know if that's something, you know, we would want as a part of a design standard process. So I'll leave it at that.
Chair Meredith Roberts?
Okay, thanks. So yeah, the one thing that is consistent from the presentation, and thank you for this very elaborate presentation, to some of the questions I'm hearing. You guys have been studying this or working on this for two years, a little more than two years. And looking at this document and expecting the planning commission to go through this document in this session, and we're trying to do this with the greatest care, I think is a little unrealistic. I would like personally to have more time. It's not to say that we're not going to address our responsibilities, but to have us make decisions having received this on Friday. I think the only person that has got a leg up on this big document is Chairperson Rod. I just would like to do justice by the residents here in Brentwood to have time to look this document over and have specific questions. There's absolutely no way that I can participate in that process because I'm not a surveyor. The technical part of this document in every chapter requires more than three days to review. What I had hoped we could do, and we haven't done it in some time, is have a working session with the author of this document and the city to bring our concerns and/or questions in so that we could really do bigger justice to this document. But to begin the conversation, I'm all for. But to actually move on this document, I just think that we would be doing a disservice to the city of Brentwood, not having all the questions answered, at least to review it and have questions to ask that makes sense. So that's my comment on this document.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brand?
So to begin with, we've had a number of people serve on this commission, and I know some of our former members have been very outspoken regarding the idea of the defensible space as a part of fire protection. I don't recall seeing anything in here that used an objective standard to define that. And I think, if I remember correctly, it was like a five-foot space. Maybe Jennifer can share that.
Yeah, so what we did add in here, it looks like it's on page 87, 6.3.2, which is our fuel modification under our fire hazard section. We do have an ember-resistant zone, which is required within five feet of all structures located in a very high fire severity zone. An ember-resistant zone is a state-defined definition, so it's not in here, but it is state-defined. And so, as well as our very high fire severity zones. And it states that it is in the most recent state-fire-high-hazard severity zone local maps and state responsibility areas. So as the maps continue to change, in our most recent local map, we actually did get a little bit more of the very high severity zones within the city. So that zone is definitely expanding further into the city. And so this would cover that zone as if or when it continues to move and relocate. But as it's currently written, it would only be required within the very high fire severity zone.
So if I understand, as build-out is completed, the dynamic nature of those zone assignments would be reflected in whatever's being built, you know, whenever those intersections take place. So that could just change. I guess it would be dependent on the time in which the project is approved, and then.
Correct.
So, but it's not uniform across the whole city. It's only based off of the fire district's assessment of our city?
Correct. And though there's the same maps that the insurances base their assessments off of as well.
Okay, great. That's, yeah, that's good to know. Whoop, sorry. The, I first want to say, like, how comprehensive this document is, is really something. I know that all y'all put a ton of work into it. So I just, I have to pause for a moment and say, like, how detailed and how, how much content there is. I mean, it's only, what, it's 10 pages longer than the last one, I think. But I think, you know, this is one of our few documents that, as Commissioner Jones had commented regarding the sort of ongoing, you know, discussion that we have at the state level versus municipal level. The, I'd like to think of a document like this as sort of outlining our strategy, if you will. If we can only have nine players, we're going to give our best batters at first and fourth, right? So I would hope that we'd be able to use this document in a way that would give us a, an edge, if you will. So when I look at this, I notice that the, many of the roof structures that we have for several, let's see, one, two, three, four, five technically, if you conclude contemporary, they don't require a tile roof. And I know that's been something that we've been very adamant about, not just this commission, but commissions before that, as well as council. I don't, is this something, some flexibility that needs to be baked in here? Or is that just, maybe, maybe you can answer it. That would be wonderful.
Yeah, so going through the original thought process of the consultant team, as well as city staff, was to look at each of the individual architectural styles themselves and look at what type of roofing material is most appropriate. You know, there are certain types of roofing materials, like I believe ranch, that is not all cases is necessarily appropriate to have a tile roof on a ranch-style home. And so on ranch-style homes, you might have other types of roofing materials. And so in some of the styles, we did allow an either-or, a tile or a composition. But there are certain ones, then, I believe, like the Spanish, that is only tile required. And these are definitely areas that, at the planning commission's recommendation or discretion, we can make changes to if that is the direction you would like to go. But that is just kind of the base of where staff and the consultant team started in making our initial draft of this document came from.
Great. Yeah, and I, at least from where I'm sitting right now, I would definitely advocate for the idea of primary use of tile roofs because, I mean, that seems to, you know, we talk about the character of Brentwood, low-density character, high-quality fabric of the community. That's what we predominantly see within Brentwood. And so just something I'd like to throw out there. Let me move down. So I know I brought up the comment about the architectural style. I tend to agree pretty strongly with Commissioner Jones on this is that I don't see the contemporary architectural style as being compatible with Brentwood whatsoever. I don't see, you know, the examples that were listed in the staff report, well, I guess, in the draft here. I think one is the hall at Trilogy. One of them is the, I think it's LMC, the Brentwood campus. And I think the other one is like the Liberty Library or something. I couldn't tell exactly, but none of those are residential, and they're all some type of commercial space. And when you drive around, and some of Trilogy has that, and I think some of our newer apartment complexes have that. But I, what my recommendation to this commission would be is that we would depart from making that an acceptable architectural style only because it's very infrequently seen, if at all. I mean, the only times I've seen something like this is like a custom home. And it's, I don't see, you know, I don't see this as being consistent. And I said this, the character of Brentwood, the low-density character, high-quality fabric, fabric of the community. You know, if it's a, if it's a, you know, posh penthouse in Santa Monica, it's perfectly appropriate to have contemporary. But, you know, if you look at the build-out, the remaining build-out of Brentwood, a lot of it is on the outskirts or a lot of it is in sort of low-density land that. that it, you know, contemporary would look substantially out of place, in my perception. And so, you know, no differently than what we do with respect to, oh, Jennifer, you might have to help me with this. Density transition, or I think you know what I mean. Lot-size density transition, where we have to scale down. It's the same basic idea where if you have a huge ranch lot next to small, single-family, like we would see like on Brentwood Boulevard, we want to ease that transition. I don't think contemporary styles necessarily do that very well. So that's one of my recommendations as we discuss this further. The only other thing I'll say about that is because we have this sort of mixed-use consideration and being really conscious of the fact that, I know that PA-1 was recently discussed at council, we have a lot of motivation to ensure that we have a flatter trajectory for, you know, projects to sort of enter that space and begin, well, not begin, that's the wrong word, to continue cultivating that economic space. I would say that it would be wonderful if we had the opportunity to, if we were going to apply that architectural standard, is that we might focus that on PA-1 in particular, if we have to use that one. Otherwise, the map that shows that all of Brentwood having that applicable, I don't think that's appropriate personally. But PA-1, I would entertain the possibility that it's appropriate because of its, you know, that we're looking at potentially having residents above, you know, having that first floor being businesses and then residents above it, the transit center, the other mixed-use types of things in which the lines between residential and commercial are so blurred. That's where we see that being most appropriate. That's where we're seeing, I know, seeing that way that certain cities in the South Bay in particular have developed some of their communities, the overarching architectural style I'm seeing is that contemporary one. And I'd like for us to avoid that if at all possible, so. Other than that, I think my main question with that would be, I know that there are certain constraints. We can't just say, oh, we want to have craftsmen only in the whole city. I'm sure the state would frown upon us for doing that. But because we have eight architectural standards, I'd imagine that we'd have significant flexibility to discard at least one. But I might have to rely on Ms. Brace over here to give us some guidance.
Yeah, I would say any, anything that is reasonable and wouldn't effectively preclude, you know, for example, affordable housing that would, you know, do away with our requirements under state law to provide for affordable housing, for example.
Yeah, and I imagine an affordable housing complex could be made in the Spanish style or craftsmen or any of those. Is that, I mean, maybe Jennifer, that's a good question for you.
Yeah, I believe, and it is one of the discussions we've had. At the very beginning, it was actually a very large discussion at the city council level when we were just talking very high-level and what area, what architectural styles to include. This is one of the exact conversations we had, whether contemporary was appropriate. And I think at the time, it was a very similar discussion. It was, you know, PA-1, I think, was originally designed to be more of a contemporary plan. And the existing goals and policies within that plan talk about contemporary architecture. Throughout the remaining portions of the city, as you indicated, I think we're seeing a lot more multifamily and high-density contemporary projects. But in terms of current development within the city, there's very, very, very few single-family contemporary projects that we've had, and they are more recent. I think Kindred and Balfour, for example, is one of them that is newer, that is a single-family contemporary project, what we would consider contemporary. In terms of multifamily, just next to it, Merrill Gardens, which is a higher-density-type senior living facility, is a contemporary project. So we do have both, but they are very, very limited currently in the city, and they are both newer projects. But that is a discussion, and so, you know, at your discretion, that is always a recommendation we can make is to take it out of the single-family section or take it out altogether of the red citywide section.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jennifer, going back to tile roof for a minute, are you thinking that a tile roof is just the clay curved tiles?
No, they have, nowadays, they actually have multiple different types of tiles. So it's not just barrel clay tile roofs. They have multiple types of tile now.
Certainly, I have ceramic tile on my, what I consider to be a craftsman-style house, and they don't look out of place at all. So that's something that I'm, a point I just kind of want to make that I don't think that asphalt tiles should be in there, but it's just my opinion. Contemporary, I also don't like that style very much. It's interesting you brought up Merrill Gardens because contemporary, and it even admits it or states it in the new standards that are proposed, contemporary is not really a style. It's a collection of styles. And so there's some things that I see that are contemporary that I think might fit in Brentwood. And there are some things that are contemporary that I think definitely would not fit in Brentwood. So if you want to bring us a contemporary style, it would need to be more sharply defined to be something that would be attractive and appealing to the residents of this community. So it would need to be more naturally styled. For instance, in my neighborhood, the paint colors all have to be kind of matching of the natural style of colors that are in, you know, you can't just go paint your house purple. It has to be, you know, like certain beiges or sage greens, things like that, browns. My next question is, are styles really objective? I mean, I can think of an example here recently where I pointed out that something was not of the style that was listed. And it's one of the styles that's on this list, by the way. And somebody said, oh, it's, well, I don't want to go back over it, but they said it was Main Street America, whatever that means. And that's not a style. And so how objective are these styles? And how well are we able to enforce them under the state definition, whatever that is, of what is objective and what is not?
So as part of the design guidelines in each of these chapters, we have the style description, and you are absolutely right. A lot of times, it comes down to the person who writes the description. They can write it different ways. How we would enforce it objectively is through the different required elements here. You can't call it a craftsman without having the required elements that are listed here. That's why we have required roof elements. We have required window elements. So within that style, there is the overarching description that itself might not always be objective. But once you put together all five of the required elements, all of those together more cohesively create that architectural style, if that makes sense.
Sure. And I think it speaks volumes that, as I go through this document, there are things that defy objectivity. I'll give you an example. In Queen Anne, you have to have a decorative railing. And it's described as a decorative railing. But you can't, it doesn't really say it has to be decorative in the Queen Anne style. It doesn't say it has to be reminiscent of, you know, 18th-century England. It just says decorative. And quite famously, the city council was faced with a controversy once where the architect came in and wanted to change the style of a railing that they had depicted in a picture. And there were people in the community that didn't like the new style. And there's no objectivity in that at all. So how, it really, at the end of the day, decisions are still going to have to be made. And I don't know how you get around it, but as much as possible. And I actually am somebody who likes objectivity and likes enforceability. I desperately needed that and didn't have it recently. Can somebody come in and say, oh, my style is kind of adjacent to that style? How can we prevent that from happening again?
Tim, on the architectural style, would you have a, creating these, how that's been done in the past?
Well, I agree that with the architectural styles, you know, objectivity and subjectivity, there's a fine line between them. I think, as Jennifer had mentioned before, that we've written and provided image samples to the point where we feel comfortable enough that the, if these standards throughout these subcategories are met, that we're going to be able to achieve that style. But as you had mentioned, you know, it does boil down to somebody's somewhat opinion of that. And so I think through the developer coming in and identifying and stating that they're going to achieve a specific architectural style in the city, running their check through the checklist that is going to come from this document, that there's enough confidence with the standards that have been created and shown here that the architectural style will be met.
I have very little faith in that. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful. But to say that, I mean, you're just begging the question. You're not really providing an objective standard. There's no pictures of, this railing would be an example of what is in the standard, but there's no picture of, this railing would not fit in the standard. There's no picture of, these are, there's pictures of, these are kinds of things that look like what we're going for, but there's no pictures of things that say, oh, this isn't what we're going for at all. And I understand, I appreciate the effort that goes into it, and it may be impossible, I don't know. But I feel like to define a style is very nearly impossible. And, but to the extent that it can be, I think there should be some language in there to keep people from messing around with it too much. That something, there should be something in there that, you know, like if you say it should be decorated, you should say it should be decorated consistent with the style. And then how do you define that? I mean, if you asked me about Art Deco, I could probably give you a description if you gave me a little time. Or Art Nouveau, I know what that is. Queen Anne, I don't know as much, but I think I could definitely look at, you know, I could see a railing that was craftsman, and no, it wasn't Queen Anne. And I'm not an architect, I'm just somebody who appreciates art. So I think it needs to be very clear. And again, the hazard is one that's just really on my mind. So having been recently taken advantage of and somebody saying that something was something it was clearly not, and there was no way to go back and debate that. And so that's what I'm going on there.
I'm through the chair. Would I be able to clarify something very quickly? I'm just thinking about your comment just then. The, what is the minimum amendment cadence to this document? So if we get two years out and we're finding, let's call it, some developers exploiting our railing statute or something like that, how quickly would we be able to remedy that?
There is no limit on how many times this document can be amended. So we definitely can come back. I can tell you that staff, we will be looking at this very carefully. And if we come across problems, we ourselves, this is the document that we are going to be working with every day. And if we are going to have problems interpreting it and we're going to have back-and-forth arguments with developers, this is something that you will see very quickly. Because that's not something that we want to deal with. Obviously, it's not something that you want to deal with. But there is not a limit or number of times that it can come back. So we can come back a month after it is approved.
Understood, understood. And I think to your point as well, I like the idea of having, maybe, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but pictures associated with adjectives.
Yeah.
Anytime we see that, that there would be some kind of, you know, is it a, the railing, right? Is it a globe? Is it a gargoyle? Is it a star? Like, I don't know, you know? It's just, but at least an example that's representative of that particular style. But, okay, I'm done.
I appreciate that. And I think that that's, you know, a valid point to say, yeah, this could be changed. But the thing is, we are a temporary body. City council is a temporary body, staff come and go. The will to do something like that may or may not exist at the time. I'd like to see something that was as solid as it could be so that future revisions were not necessary. Moving on to the next point, I do think that we probably could use a little bit more time to look at this thing. I did keep finding myself coming up with questions, even just during this discussion. I keep coming up with more questions, trying to jot them down, coming up with more questions, trying to keep track of what's in my head. And I'm very, very old, so things come and go in my head, right? I think that I would like more time echoing what Chairman Ernest Roberts had said. I think that that might be appropriate as we go on discussing. And kind of the final thing that I wanted to touch on tonight in discussion is the process of writing the resolution. The last time we did an advisory resolution, the resolution itself, the recitals and the actual document were the same as what was in the staff report. And then the recommendations were put up into the staff report that was passed on city council. And then we had to kind of go back and redo it and make sure that the recommendations got into the actual resolution. And so what I have in mind, and Brittany, you'll want to listen to this too, is that instead of doing that, the recitals could be amended as simply as just saying the document with the recommended amendments finds the, you know, the Planning Commission finds, and then we start doing redile. We should just add something to the effect that the Planning Commission finds with these amendments that, and then go into the recitals. And then that would take care of not having to rewrite most of the recitals. The recommendations that we're making are to make us believe those recitals, basically. So, and I know that Jennifer takes careful notes, and so it should be possible to do it in that format. And in that way, there wouldn't be any confusion as far as what the intent was of this body as we make our advisory. And you can always include, you know, both amended and unamended. City council can do what they want with our advisory, but that would be my recommendation for how we would format it. So with that, I'm really looking at maybe extending this out and giving us all another look at it. But I know that Chairman Ernest Roberts is kind of looking at that. I'm just wondering how other people are feeling about that, if anybody wants to give some discussion on that, on that point. And just anybody, just...
I mean, I'll respond to that. What I had seen, I looked at a couple of other cities and what they had done, is they had done a work, as Commissioner Roberts had described, that some kind of workshop in which the public was invited in the, you know, planning or council was invited to sort of have a bit more of an open dialogue regarding what they did and didn't want in the actual ODS. Seems like, based off of the completeness that I'm seeing of this document so far, it seems like we've passed that step already. However, you know, if we wanted to give this a once-over again, as, you know, 72 hours isn't a ton of time to review a document of this nature. I mean, for holistic review sake, I mean, I'm not against continuing for us to look at this. I do agree, the weight of this WEIGHT, of this document is definitely important considering our current situation with the state. So I'd want to be thorough.
Commissioner Johnson, do you have a comment?
So I think the document is very complete. I do, just to go back on the contemporary, just if I may, a little bit. All of the pictures that they depicted for the contemporary tended to be like commercial buildings versus like a, you know, that I know these buildings, even this one isn't, oh, no, excuse me, like the one, you know, I know where that is off of, I think it's Walnut. These all tend to be commercial buildings rather than residential homes, and then, or multi, you know, multi-story homes. I don't know if that was the intent of that, but, so that's one thing that I have a issue with. I think I think it's very hard to the chair, I think it's almost impossible, as you said, to get all the details in, to make this totally, there's nothing to be, you know, it's, I don't know that we could ever say, well, you're going to have this railing, take a picture of this railing and not this railing, and for each one of these styles, I think it'd be very difficult. However, I do like, I think it was someone, I don't remember which commissioner said this about making something, saying that maybe, you know, the commercial style shouldn't be in a specific area, or at least if we're going to use pictures of the commercial style in this document, it should be more like the commercial houses that I see here, which would be Merrick, Merrill Gardens on Balfour, if that's one of the ones that you mentioned, instead of commercial, you know, commercial properties that are like literally office buildings. I think that would not be appropriate. I just have one question, I don't know if it's, who answers this, if it's Jennifer or not, but is there a timeframe that we are supposed to be doing, like, you know, is this supposed to be approved in a given timeframe that's out there?
There is no legal timeframe.
There's no legal timeframe.
We are currently covered with our interim objective design standards. They are not that hefty. So we, you know, obviously would be better suited to have something more comprehensively in place, but there is no legal timeframe that we are, need to abide by at this time.
Okay. Other than that, you know, Chair Roberts, I mean, excuse me, I'm one council behind, but Emeritus Chair, you know, wanting more time, I mean, I'm not like against it, I, you know, I think this is a very comprehensive document. And as Vice Chair said, we may be beyond that point, but and we don't seem to have a timeframe, you know, that this needs to be done in a certain timeframe, so I guess I'm open to that. My only comments are, you know, making sure that that commercial style represents homes rather, and we document as much, rather than commercial buildings that are, because that is not, and then the homes that we do see, I don't, are there any homes that are currently, you said there are homes, where are the homes, the homes that are contemporary?
Currently, there's a development called Kindred and Balfour, it is actually right behind Merrill Gardens, so if you turn at the intersection of Merrill Gardens and the golf course, it is that the new single-family home's right behind that. I don't recall if it's gated.
I think it's gated, yeah.
So I don't know if you can get in there, but...
In front of Somerset, too, right?
Correct, in front of Somerset, too.
I went down there one time, I'm trying to remember what it looks like.
And there's also, well, it's under construction, but old, formerly known as Cowell Ranch in the Meadows, which will be on the other side of Marsh Creek, is more of a contemporary style that was recently approved just last year. But those are under construction, and so not near, anywhere that you could see at this time. But you can find their plans on our Development Projects page.
Yes, I am of the opinion that, you know, that as everybody has commented about the commercial issue, that is an issue for me personally, especially when you're looking at it as a commercial development and you're going to apply it to homes, which, I don't necessarily, I think this is a complete document, I don't know that we're going to get much better, I don't know that you can add enough detail to make it ironclad, that would be my concern there. And then I don't, to be honest with you, I don't even know if we want to add that much detail, because we would end up like, you ever drive through a community and every house looks like the other house right next door, or because it's cookie cutter, because it's exact carbon copies? And I don't want to live in a community that is exact carbon copies, where every house looks like every other house, so. But other than that, I think the job was a well-done job, it's a great document, I don't know if we're going to get there, but I'm open to anything else other than that.
If we were going to continue this, I'm just, I'm curious on the areas that would need to get expanded upon. I know I had brought up the idea of, if there's an adjective, have a picture to describe it, or some other language that uniquely identifies it as it's assigned to a style. I just wanted to get a picture of what that might look like if we were to continue it, just so that, my own reference.
That's a valid question, I'll be getting to that in a minute, I just want to get a feel from all the commissioners, I haven't heard from Commissioner Jones yet.
Yeah, thank you. I would say I do think that this is a complete document. I think if we're extending it, it's purely for the purposes of allowing more time to review it. I don't know how much more we would ultimately add to it, or ultimately how much we would change. I think the only thing from my perspective is the contemporary component and not having that as a part of housing. That would be my recommended change. Outside of that, I think this is a complete document. And again, not going to stand in the way of extension if that is what the majority of the commission wants to do, but I'm not sure how much more we would, you know, we would ultimately come to, but, you know, of course, I'm not you guys, I'm just me, so, you know, so I, I think we have a complete document, I'd like to take the contemporary component out of it, and that's where I sit.
Chair Maris, do you want to add anything on the idea of an extension?
Well, yeah, I'm not going to be able to participate in voting on this tonight, because I do need more time to review this document. I know the citizens of Brentwood are counting on each one of us to move through this process responsibly. It is a complete document, but there are quite a few things that I would like to take a second look at, maybe even a third look at, and there are questions that I might have for both the planning department and or the author of this document. So with that said, there's no question in my mind, it's a complete document, but there are a lot of technical pieces to this complete document. And I, for one, as much as it's being said this is objective, I see developers coming in and being quite subjective with much of what I have read thus far. So I would like to just have some questions answered. What they are, I don't know at this time, but I do know that it's a technical document, and what I've perused through, I would like to have an opportunity to take another look at it. And that's, I'm just being very transparent with you, I will not be able to vote on this tonight.
I feel kind of the same. What I would be proposing that we do, and I don't want to stop discussion tonight, we can talk about it as much as we feel like we need to, everybody get their ideas out. But I would like to take some more time to reflect on everything I'm hearing, because some of the things I'm hearing for the first time, of course, and this is something, and to echo what Jennifer said, is that we want to get it done. I mean, we don't want to be on the interim objective design standards forever. They are kind of thin, as mentioned, but I do think that I felt rushed on this, and it is 91 pages of more dense text than the usual design document, and I want to consider everything that everybody said tonight, I want to consider, I want to go through more carefully and see if I can find some more examples of where I feel like it's possibly could be more objective, and maybe I can come up with wording that would make me feel better and might make everybody feel better, I don't know. But I just feel like time is something that we could use on this, and we could, we can come back with it as soon as the next meeting, I mean, it's a couple of weeks, and you know, at that point in time, I think people would be able to come back with carefully worded suggestions of how we should amend it. I feel like, I feel almost certainly that people are going to be making amendments, I'm hearing them everywhere. And so I think that as we sit here and talk about them and try to write them, and, you know, should we make pictures of different railings that will or will not, or should we do this, should we do that? I think time to reflect would be kind of nice to have. And you know, if I was going to make a motion, I would just probably move something like that we continue the discussion at our next meeting, is that something that you were considering? Chair Maris Roberts, were you considering maybe just postponing it till the next meeting?
Sure, because, did you say LUD bypasses this on three separate occasions?
Yeah, there were just scheduling conflicts this summer.
I understand, but it's been in the hopper for some time now, so I don't see the hurt in it being in the hopper just a little longer. This was a LUD project, and I appreciate it coming before the planning commission, but I do want to do my due diligence in reviewing this in its entirety. So yes, if we can move it to the next planning commission, it will give me time at least to review it, to call the author in or city and have them answer my questions, and then bring that back to the planning commission, the questions that I would have with certainty. That would be what I plan on doing with this complete document.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Eric, Planning Manager.
Good evening, Chairperson Flor. Just some comments and questions as I'm sitting here listening to everything. One is, and I wanted to explore Commissioner Roberts' idea of the workshop, right, where there'd be this back and forth. I'm not sure that would be the best approach, just given where we're at in the process, and I think Vice Chair Brand mentioned that, but we would be happy to sit with you either individually, or like in groups of, you know, two groups of two, and then another individual person, so we're respecting the Brown Act, of course. We'd be happy to do that, and potentially even schedule Tim or one of his associates, right, at JZMK to assist us in that. And after you've, again, had some time to go through the documents in a couple of weeks. As far as the actual extension, I think ideally we would continue the item tonight to a specific date, right, in the future. The next one is probably not the best idea, number one, we were looking to cancel because there's no items scheduled, it's also fall break for the schools, and I also don't think that would give the commission the time that it really wants with this, and then allow us to come back with a staff report and changes. So I think we'd probably be looking either end of October, or maybe even the November meeting. And while we're on that note, just wanted to point out that the meetings for the rest of the year are pretty limited. There's only one meeting in November, which, excuse me, is November 4th, and then one meeting in December, which is the 2nd. So again, the commission has essentially expressed a desire to have more time with us tonight, so I think getting it on the very next meeting just feels ironically a little bit too rushed in that regard. So we should think about what date actually works. I also wanted to point out that if, when we do that, that we can ensure that each of the commissioners is in fact available for that meeting we're continuing it to.
Through the chair, I know we had commented specifically if there was anything that we would recommend to staff to make, at least continue scrubbing the doc for any other details or changes, you know, while we wait for whatever subsequent meeting in which this was to return. Sounds like the direction of this conversation is kind of moving in that, in that means, so is there, I'm sort of opening up the idea of, does anyone have comments about that?
Are you asking specifically comments about what it is that we'll be looking at?
So I brought up the example of, like, if we want more specifics to address, you know, I'll call it more nuanced design characteristics of various styles, and then have pictures assigned to those that we don't see in the document today. Is there anything like that, where we just want to see a bit more of an expansion on as we move into a future continued meeting?
Well, for me, I would like to just take a look at all of it, from parking to sidewalks to, I want to take a look at the entire document as it relates to the neighborhoods, tree sizes, I mean, it's a very technical document. A lot of it is, it is what it is, but there are some things that I'd like to spend a little more time, so specific questions or comments to this completed document, I'm going to wait until I have an opportunity to really take a look and a deep dive on this.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I'll agree with Chair Maris Roberts, that I think trying to simultaneously edit the document while we continue to consider it with fresh eyes, it might, it might make it harder for us all to come up with our comments at the next, let's work with the document as it is, as we do our individual reviews, mindful of what's been said tonight by all of us. And when we come back, we should be prepared to offer, my hope is that we would be prepared to offer constructive changes, like that we would be ready to kind of offer amendments in a way to the documents, that each of us would say, I would change this, I would change this, I would change this, as specifically as we can, you know, with the, having had the time to reflect and think about it on our own. And at that point, I think that we would be able to move something forward if we were prepared, unless we were just at loggerheads over this or that change, but that's kind of how I have it in my head. I can make a motion.
Well, Eric, sorry, I just have a potential suggestion, but a question first, would, and I'm just throwing this out there, like, an additional two weeks for the commission to kind of go back and do the deep dive into the document, would that be realistic? Or would you need even more time than that?
It's realistic for me. As long as you're available.
The reason I bring that up is, okay, so that basically takes us through end of the month, early October. We could then, and again, if you're interested, schedule individual or small group meetings, right, with staff, in kind of early October to have that extra dialogue. And then that would probably put us at that November 4th meeting, and as of right now, we don't have anything else on the calendar, so we could essentially dedicate that meeting to hashing through the rest of it and getting a formal recommendation from the commission so that we could then move it on to the council.
So I probably won't be here at that November 4th meeting, just want to let you know.
Okay, good, I'm glad I mentioned, I'm glad I threw that out there then. Anybody else going to be missing from that meeting?
I don't believe I have any plans, I can look at my calendar.
Okay. I should be okay.
I'll be okay.
Prefer not to do it over fall break, for sure, but November's fine.
Well, and the other thing is, since we're not going to be having, we don't have anything scheduled for that October 7th meeting, you wouldn't have to be worried about preparing for that meeting when we're having these individual meetings, so the timing just seemed to kind of work out, at least in my head.
Or what about the 21st of October?
We could potentially do that, I do see a couple of other items on that agenda, so the ODS would not be a standalone item, that's okay, but we got through the Chipotle item tonight, but I don't know if it would give enough time for your individual review, for any back and forth with staff, and then to update the staff report and attachments, including the ODS itself.
Well, I think that the 7th is actually three weeks from today, isn't it? Because we've got, we've got actually a rare 5th Tuesday in September.
Correct.
So it'd be three weeks from now.
Yeah.
I could do that.
October 7th?
Well, oh no, we, we wouldn't be actually meeting on the 7th, but we could put, we could continue this to the 21st.
Okay.
If you think that that would give you enough time individually to do the deep dive, to meet with staff as needed, and then we would of course have to turn around the agenda materials.
Well, I think that at this, it would be fine by me, but what about your staff, the Planning Department, I mean, does that give you enough time? I keep hearing you say that there's some things that you're going to have to put in place as well, so again...
Well, so there'll be a couple of other items on that agenda, the 21st, so this won't be the only agenda item, and I guess depending on how the commission's review and those discussions go, I mean, I don't know, Jennifer, weigh in on this, but I think it's doable.
In terms of staff's perspective and putting together the agenda items, from what I'm hearing, is you're not looking for staff to make any changes, you don't want to be reviewing one document while staff is working on edits, and so my understanding is that the agenda report that would come back would really just be a summary of tonight's comments and the same attachments as tonight, is that correct, what you're looking for for the next meeting?
That's how I'm thinking about it.
Then I think that it would be doable.
And also too, like, you know, the discretion of the chair, if we get to the 21st meeting and we're running until our late hours, that we've seen before, we could always continue the ODS to the next meeting after that.
Fair enough.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
I'm fine, yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we...
Whoops. Just a quick question on, because we're talking about getting it on the 7th, I definitely want to participate on this particular deal, but I'm going to be in Miami, which is on the East Coast time zone, which would mean...
On the 21st?
Oh, the 21st, so we're going to do it on 21st, and I just, okay, good, I'm good.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion that we move this agenda item, or extend it to October 21st, at which time we can have a robust conversation and move forward.
Can you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it. There we are. Let's move on to informational reports, starting with transplant, Vice Chair Brand.
Yeah, the Tri Delta Transit, they gave us a, a little bit of a preview of the progress on the Glide Ways project, in which individual cars on their own, I'll call it, dedicated right-of-way would be used to fill the existing gaps in public transport infrastructure, so think of, you know, walk, you know, if you were at the streets of Brentwood, you could hop in one of these things, and for three bucks, it would take you to Bart in Antioch, as an example, if you split the thing with two people. Really interesting technology, I, you know, I think they're piloting it, starting like this month in Atlanta, so I guess if you happen to be out there, go for it, but yeah, other than that, no, not a whole lot, thanks.
Design Review Subcommittee.
We didn't meet.
Okay, that sounds familiar. LUD, we also did not meet yesterday, we had been planning to discuss the thing we've just been talking about here, so, and again, if anybody's listening to me out there, you'll want to pay attention to this, we're going to bring it back on the 21st, so it's important. And the Brentwood Municipal Code Review Committee.
No meeting, I gotta, gotta talk with Darren about that, because I think we still, I think we're overdue now.
Okay, and moving on, future agenda item requests? No, we didn't. I have a future agenda item request, actually. What I've noticed in social media and some other venues is that people have been saying things about expressing doubts or curiosity about why sometimes staff will make a recommendation, and the commission or the city council will move in the opposite direction. And I've seen people campaign on, oh, I, I trust staff, and I would always do what they said, and I've seen other people that say, no, wait a minute. And it struck me, I, I don't really know enough about how staff evaluates the applications and what all of their criteria are, and I think in fairness to staff, because sometimes I see people get mad at staff too, because they recommend a project that isn't popular, and I think that's also unfair. What I'd like to do is have a discussion, just to decide, or not to decide, but to find out a little bit more about how staff decides things compared to how we review it as commission or as the city council would review it, and kind of clarify why that can happen, like, why we can come to a different decision, and why that's all right. And I think a lot of people don't understand it, and I find that when I'm trying to explain it to people, I don't quite have enough insight to give them, and, you know, so I'd like to consider that, and have I, have I given you enough to make an agenda item with?
Chairperson Flor, yes, I think you have, and the way we've done this in the past, since you brought this up tonight, we would bring it back to the next meeting for a little bit more of a discussion, and then get consensus from the commission in terms of how to move forward, but I do see this potentially as an item we could bring back and have that sort of back and forth. I will say it's not going to be super scientific, right, there's not a formula that staff follows necessarily, but it's definitely a process, and I think it could be informative for a lot of folks, including the public, so we'll put it back on the next agenda when we come back on the 21st.
I really appreciate that, I just, I just feel like the public is not well-informed on this topic, and I think they should be. Okay, the next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for October 7th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, and will be held here at Council Chamber, it's located at 150 City Parkway, unless it gets canceled. And I need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.